Welcome to the Hingham Zoning Board of Appeals. It is June 26, 2018, and the time is 7:06. These proceedings are being recorded by the zoning administrator and also by -- now, it's not HKIM?
Harbor Media.
By Harbor Media. Thank you. First item on our agenda this evening is not Riverstone. First item on our agenda this evening is WSM Hingham Properties LLC Derby Street Shops, 100 Derby Street. This is a continuation of a hearing from May 14, 2018, and we have a request to continue that hearing to the 21st of August. Okay, 21st of August at 7:00 PM. Is there anyone here for that hearing? So if not, I will accept a motion to continue this hearing to the 21st of August at 7:00 PM.
And I just note, too, that they're also offering to extend the board's decision deadline to September 21st.
Okay, and that's part of the sign request?
That's part of the request, and then just two of the three of you are on that panel, so just Mario and yourself would act on that.
Okay.
But I can't be here on the board.
Okay, so I think we can continue it to that date and then work with the applicant to find a date, A, that they would be ready for, and B, that the panel would either be available or we could have somebody else mullins in.
And we can't do it in July? There's no?
They're not going to be ready for July.
Oh, okay. So with that, I would accept the motion to continue the Derby Street Shops hearing to August 21st at 7:00 PM. So moved? Is there a second?
You can't second. It's only you. You have to second yourself.
I will second it myself.
This'll be a tough vote, all in favor.
It is continued. Okay. Next item on our agenda is Riverstone LLC. This is a continuation from our hearing on June 13th. The project is off Ward Street. This is an application for comprehensive permit under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40B, to construct a 36-unit condominium development, including nine affordable units, on approximately 6.7 acres of land located in Residence District B. The revised site layout plan dated April 25, 2018 depicts 32 units. Who is here for the applicant this evening?
My name is Warren Baker. I represent Riverstone, the applicant, and with me is the principal, Brian Murphy.
Welcome. So we'll begin with a review of items that have been received since the prior hearing. Emily?
Since the last hearing, which was held again on June 13th?
Stop you for one second. If anyone cannot hear people up here, you should raise your hand so that we will know to speak louder. Sorry.
No, no problems. The prior hearing was held June 13, 2018. Since then, we received from the applicant a copy of a potential vernal pool analysis memo. It's addressed to the Massachusetts Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program from Brad Holmes of Environmental Consulting and Restoration LLC. It's dated June 12, 2018, and was received yesterday, June 25, 2018. Materials submitted by representatives of either the board or the town include a supplemental financial peer review report from Robert Stankis, CPA, CFE, CBA, Director at CBIZ, dated June 23, 2018. It was received today, June 26, 2018. We also received a supplemental civil peer review letter from Patrick Brennan, PE of Amory Engineers, dated today, June 26, 2018, as well as a supplemental peer review report from John Zimmer, South River Environmental, dated June 26, 2018. He's the board's wetland scientist. And so that's -- those are all the documents we've received.
Okay. Counsel, do we have it correct? Was there anything else that you sent that you?
Not that I am aware of.
Okay, great. Thank you. So with that, I think we should proceed with a review, Susan and Emily, of the conditions.
Yeah, we actually were going to suggest that the board might wish to start with the waiver responses that the applicant -- so in front of you, you have a full copy of the applicant's submission dated May 16, but you also have an excerpt, and I'd suggest you take the excerpt. It has highlighted yellow marks on the cover of it. And there's just a couple that we want to draw the board's attention to.
Before we proceed, this is the applicant's list of waivers?
This is a compiled document that represents the applicant's -- it's an excerpt of the applicant's requested waivers, the board's responses, and then the applicant's responses to the board's responses.
And does the applicant have this document as well?
Well, they provided the board with this copy on May 16.
Okay, so this is the applicant's own document. Okay.
Or rather, an excerpt from. So on page one of their May 16th submittal, the second waiver request that they've made relates to certain site plan review submittal requirements. We had discussed in May that some of those, it appeared the applicant had complied with, and then others, the board said that they were denying the waiver request. The applicant has responded to those, in part, some that they're agreeing with the board's response, but others that they disagree and are saying that the submission of certain analyses required under site plan review would render their project uneconomic. Specifically, these relate to the submittal requirements D, which is an analysis of compliance with all relevant dimensional provisions of this bylaw; G, an analysis of the capacity of town soils, water supply, ways and services to absorb impact of the proposed development; and H, an analysis of compliance with the most current versions of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Stormwater Management Policies and Standards and Massachusetts' Erosion, Sediment and Control Guidelines. And so I guess we wanted to highlight this and ask whether the board would like to see clarification as to how submission of these, of an analysis, or any of these analyses, might render a project uneconomic.
So Counsel, do you understand what's being asked here?
Not totally.
So items DG, H, and I are submittal requirements under site plan review. Over in the first column, requirement, the applicant had requested waiver of CDGHINJ. The board's review on May 3rd, the board denied a waiver of the submissions at DG, H, and I, and the applicant responded that DG, H, and I render the project uneconomic. And as Emily read, three of those items are just analyses of information being provided. I is the site planning plan. So the question, I guess, the question for staff, Emily and myself, when going through this in detail and that we thought we would bring to the board's attention, is a question as to why submissions DG, H, and I, just making the submissions, are uneconomic.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense because we're talking about the informational requirements that are part of our regs, and the response we got from you was if you were required to do it, it would render the project uneconomic. And we're not understanding why providing that information, that the act of providing the information renders the project uneconomic.
I think that that area, I think that that area of DH and I within the site plan review multi-unit development arena is problematic to a certain extent because we start off saying that the procedures are not applicable and we agree with the board, and then we have also agreed that the plan complies, okay? And then the third thing we say is if they were imposing them, they're uneconomic for the fact that we now have to do additional submittals. Additional submittals take time, money, and cost. Now, if they already comply with your rules and you say, "We're not going to waive that because we're already in compliance," then we obviously have little to complain about. But to be comprehensive about it because sometimes the analysis given to us from the ZBA review about what it is and what it's not can be confusing. And so I think we were trying to be comprehensive in our answer. So if they're not applicable, it's moot. If we comply already, it's moot. If you're saying that there's an additional level of submittals that we should be making, all right, because of these rules and regulations that we believe are not applicable, then we are answering that any amount of time in the aggregate would add to the cost without adding to any of the profit margin and therefore uneconomic.
So if it would cost $500 to respond, it would make this project uneconomic? Is that what you're suggesting?
As it adds to all of the other conditions, yes.
Joe, can I just make some clarifications? First of all, Section 1I is site plan review by the planning board, so it doesn't have anything to do with special permit requirements or anything else. Even if it was an as-of-right project, it would be subject to site plan review. Those are applicable under 40B. The zoning board is acting as a planning board in doing site plan review. So, you know, if you kind of walk through the procedural steps. And then the next question is what information should be provided? You know, I agree to the extent they've already provided it, or it's not applicable, then it doesn't apply. I think there was one of them, D, analysis of dimensional requirements. They've stated, so on C, they agree that the plan complies. So that's fine. That's what the board agreed, they agreed. On D, the board, at the time when you reviewed this on May 3rd, said, "No, this is information that's appropriate for the board to receive." So they, the board did not, said, indicated that it wouldn't agree to waive it, you know, at a time that the board might make a decision. And the applicant has said that these items all make it uneconomic. So there was just, just to clarify what this section is and what it's not, and that the board is acting as a planning board for site plan review, which is also required under as-of-right, for which they may, they may and must, if they want waivers, request waivers. So, you know, that's where it is. I mean, I guess, you know, it was confusing to Emily and me as to why providing those items would render the project uneconomic, and we thought we'd bring it to the board's attention in case the board wanted to try to get clarification.
Right, and in my view, there's a difference between saying that you've complied versus saying that you're not going to provide the information because it would render the project, the act of compliance would render the project uneconomic. And I disagree with the assessment that it is moot because, in fact, in many cases, the information that we've received is not complete and is not in compliance with what the regulations require. It's, in my experience, unusual for an applicant to assert that providing the information itself is an act that renders the project uneconomic. And it's, I guess it's startling both to myself and staff, and so that is, I guess, the genesis of our comment here.
I think that also, my problem is, is that in many ways is taken out of context, notwithstanding the recitation that this is as-of-right kind of issue. Site plan review in itself is a problematic issue under the law with whether or not it is in fact a special permit and treated like one. And the answer to the question is the fact that I'm not sure I agree with that analysis initially, so therefore is not required. The second thing is that the analysis and the process that we have gone through is very much site plan review. And as a matter of fact, the text of this whole is the fact that it's a preliminary plan. These require far more than a preliminary plan in the process, and therefore the requirement to do that, I think, is unauthorized, number one, and number two, all of the effort and the cost, which has been extraordinary so far, adds to it, and therefore I think that the analysis and the claim that it's uneconomic is appropriate.
Before I respond, Susan, did you have anything further on that?
Yes, I disagree with Attorney Baker's characterization of the law in Massachusetts, which is common law with respect to site plan review. The case law is very clear. If a zoning bylaw provides it's a special permit, then it's treated as a special permit. If a bylaw does not provide for a special permit, which Hingham does not, then site plan review is not a special permit. It cannot be denied except on two very extreme limit situations, which almost never arise, and it is required for every as-of-right project of this scale, subsidized, unsubsidized, in Hingham. So I, just from a, that's just my legal counter opinion.
Okay, I don't think we're going to get you to agree with our legal assessment, but the board is concerned, not with your legal argument, but with the assertion that providing the information renders the project uneconomic. What's your next point?
So on the following page, we just wanted to draw the board's attention to a newer waiver that there hasn't been substantial discussion of yet. Under side yard setback, prior iterations of the waiver request had referenced a 10-foot setback for certain units, less than 20 for other certain units. But the highlighted language, which refers to, it's a request for less than 10-foot setbacks for other structures, including mechanized and motorized equipment, so HVAC units, as well as, for the first time, although the board's noted this as an oversight in the past, the retaining wall adjacent to units 23 to 25. I think the board had, in some respects, considered a waiver, though it had not been requested related to the retaining wall, because you've imposed conditions related to the retaining wall, but this HVAC one is new. The bylaw requires for, in residential districts, that all mechanized or motorized equipments, equipment comply with setbacks, which in this case would be 20 feet.
And so they are, the applicant is asserting that complying with that requirement would make the project uneconomic?
Correct.
And we're not necessarily, I mean, it's up to the board whether you want to kind of discuss it and weigh where you are on it. It's something that you'll be discussing when you go through these in more detail, when you deliberate, but since it was a change to the waiver list from the original waiver list, or the last waiver list, this was a change that appeared on May 16th, we just wanted to call it out to make sure the board was aware there had been a change in the waiver list.
Did you have anything you wanted to add on that?
No more than the fact that the waiver list was a work in process, as we all know, with regard to various conditions. We were made aware of that particular item, and if it was overlooked, we wanted to make sure that it was included.
Okay.
And then the next item is similar. For rear yard setback, the applicant is, in this iteration of the waiver requests, newly asking for relief from the 20-foot required setback for all other structures. Rear yard, under rear, yep. So I don't know if that's limited just to the mechanized and motorized equipment referred to above, if that's for decks, but they just say for all other structures. That could be sheds. So I don't know if the board needs some clarification or?
I think we do. So I'm not sure that I understand what the waiver request covers. As written, it literally covers all structures as defined by the zoning bylaw.
As I read the bylaw and we looked at this, one of the concerns about the setback was the 10-foot setback for all other structures. The bylaw then goes on to say including, I'm relieved, and then we outlined that to make it very, very clear about air conditioning, the other kinds of issues. When we got to the second thing, we did the same language without the massive repetition of including. So it says, for 10-foot for other structures defined by the zoning bylaws. So to the extent there is a structure that is within that 10 feet and violates that, because it wasn't designed or accepted by the plan, we asked for a waiver.
But so is it related to mechanized and motorized equipment?
It includes it in the same way that includes above. If, for clarity, it would make sense to repeat that clause, that inclusive clause, and add it on into the rear yard setback language, then we, so certainly we agree and we would amend it to place that in there if that makes it clear.
And have you considered, you're just indicating less than, would it go to zero feet? Would it be at 10 feet? Would it be somewhere in between?
As a preliminary plan right now, because it was not cited on the plan and where those may go, whether or not there are any, I don't know. Whether or not they are roof units, whether or not they are other kinds of units, because they are preliminary plans, that one currently is unknown.
So it does, have you, do you believe that you will need relief, or is this anticipatory?
Either way, I think we need to place it in there to say that, to the extent that there are those particular units that would fall in for engineering purposes, cost or design purposes, then yes, we want to make sure that we don't get caught with not requesting a waiver at the appropriate time. Since we had to be as particular as possible, that waiver is requested, but the preliminary plans, I believe, do not indicate that there were designed them in that. But we wanted to make sure that we weren't faulted for its exclusion.
And where you have not yet identified whether or not the HVAC units could comply with the bylaw, you still would represent that if the board did not grant this waiver, it would render the project uneconomic?
Yes, again, if you added the fact that we had to have 10 feet with these particular units, therefore spreading them out, therefore diminishing the number of units, yes, it would make it in the aggregate with the other conditions uneconomic.
So the, one of the concerns I have is that it appears that you're requesting a waiver where, I'll take an example, the air conditioning unit could either be on a roof or on the ground and therefore infringe the setback. We don't know the cost of doing it one versus the other. Even if there is no cost between the two, you are still requesting the waiver?
I believe that it is not a function of the cost of providing the utility or the heating or cooling to the unit. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the requirement of imposing a 10-foot setback for these particular units from any other structure or from a side yard setback. So the answer to the question is, is that if that was imposed, that would again diminish the density and therefore be uneconomic. So I think it's the setback problem, not the fact that we're installing the utility.
So I missed how you've answered my question, because if the unit is on the roof, there's no setback issue. If it's next to it, there is a setback issue. And I posited that there's no cost difference between the two. And what I asked is, even if there's no cost difference between the two, are you looking for this waiver?
I, to put it differently? I thought I did answer the question.
So to make it clear, so that would be a yes or no. Are you seeking the waiver or not?
If we put the unit on the ground and it is subject to this setback, yes, we're requesting a waiver. If we don't, we don't need it.
So in other words, even if there is no cost to you for putting it on the roof, you still want the waiver?
The cost is in the effect of obeying the setback requirement that would diminish the density of the project. That makes it uneconomic. It's a consequence of your condition.
But if the building, structure itself doesn't move, and it's just the, speaking specifically about an HVAC unit, if that is placed 10 feet from a side or rear yard line, but the building doesn't move, you're going to put the HVAC unit somewhere, what's the difference if it's 10 feet from the side yard or rear yard line or not?
I think that the answer is the cost of the unit, I agree with you. I understand that. I admitted that. I said it. My problem is, is that we have the unit, and we have to have this now that we decide to place it, and the only place to make it work is eight feet. So we violated the side yard setback. That means we have to move that two feet back. Then we have to move the unit X number feet back or whatever. That's when the uneconomic analysis comes in.
Right, so the premise of your response was that you had to place it so that it was eight feet? And I gave you an example where you did not have to place it because you had an alternative, namely, on the roof. And I said, "In that circumstance, are you still requesting the waiver?" And I heard you say, "Yes," and I don't understand that response.
And, okay, part of the question is, is that you are indicating to me that the cost of the roof unit and the cost of the ground unit must be the same. I'm guessing, not as an engineer, not as someone who builds these for a living, that that particular cost would in fact be the same. I don't know. It may in fact that the roof unit and every other kind of its utilities, its piping, its electricity, whatever it may be, might be more expensive. Since that issue with regard to the eight-yard setback, I do not believe to the height of imperiling public safety, then the additional cost of this project, which is also uneconomic in many, many ways because of those things, would make it even more uneconomic. So I, yes, the answer to the question is, I still am asking for waiver. I think the answer would be, is to the extent that there is a unit that is within that period of time, then what happens is, is that it's conditioned in the following way or subject to review or however you want to deal with it, if in fact those are implied. But the fact that I am now limited to the fact that I cannot put them on once the final plan is done, then I think that that mistake is, I don't know how we can admit to that.
Joe, I think that there's even a more significant issue here, which in effect, they've made a choice to submit plans that don't show this level of detail. So they're asking you for a blanket waiver, which the board has discussed multiple times, which the handbook of 40B has said is inappropriate, and instead, if they determine they have to put them within a setback that the board has required by other condition, then a notice of project change for each of the units for which it would not comply would be the appropriate process, not a blanket waiver today for however many units the project ends up being.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we've had that discussion, yes. Okay, let's move on.
So that's all we have for the waiver list at this time. We also provided the board with full copies of the applicant's submission dated May 16, responding to the board's proposed conditions. And similarly, while you have the same, you have the full text, there's a few that we'd like to discuss in some detail. In connection with that review, we have a couple of other documents to share, if you can bear with us just a sec. I'm distributing, I did give one to Pat already, a staff review of all of the conditions to which the applicant's all of the conditions to which the applicant submitted responses on May 16th.
Is this another?
Do you have one for Mr. Baker?
Yep. There was an extra. So we're going to use that document together with the applicant's submission. And then our peer review engineer, Pat Brennan, has also worked on a plan that will help us assess certain responses. Pat has.
Do you have copies of that?
Copies. So we're going to try to project it. The projector was not earlier collaborating very well.
These are.
And I would just note for the record, and I'll ask Emily to stamp her official copy that this should, this document should be dated today. Doesn't, doesn't look like it has a date. Oh, it does. It says dated June, sorry, Emily. It does say dated June 26, 2018 at the top.
Um.
In the header, it says dated. I just wanted to make sure this document was dated.
Oh, yes.
It does say at the top.
Yep.
You have enough to, okay.
I think you may have to dim lights even more.
It's also shown on the big screen TV back on the wall there, if people find that a little bit easier to see, so.
Does that help for the board?
Actually, yes, that was good without.
Right.
Brilliance is.
Okay, so bear with us.
So the summary that we have, just help me to understand what that is.
So this is, this table is, it represents all of the conditions that the applicant responded to. So we have.
I'm going to stop you. So that, so we have a set of conditions. This is a subset of the conditions that, where we've gotten responses back from the applicant.
Correct.
This is not all the conditions.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. We provide, after identifying the condition number, we briefly describe it. So that's why you have the full text to refer back to in part. We've then identified what we believe to be the local concern related to that condition based on the board's discussions during prior hearings. And we try to cross-reference the proposed condition with the supporting evidence, either the testimony from the public, or the board's peer review engineers and other experts that would support imposition of a particular condition. So if we can, we'll experiment with this, and hopefully that will help you get the format of it. So the first series we're going to talk about are related to dimensional setbacks. So at the bottom of page one, condition C I A, little one, relates to the minimum front yard setback. So the board had imposed a 35-foot front yard setback. The applicant had represented, and we can see their response on page four of the full text document, that they don't agree to the proposed condition, which, and the waiver denial that relates to it, because it would render the project uneconomic by significantly reducing the available units. And then they indicate that it's not justified by valid health, safety, environmental design, open space planning, or other local concern.
Let me stop you. So when you say the other document, in each case, it's the applicant's response dated May 16th?
Correct.
Okay.
So to their first point about significantly reducing the available units, if you can look at the exhibit that Patrick Brennan prepared today.
And you have, you have hard copies, which might be easier for you.
Easier for you to see. But you can see a red line at the front of the site. That red line represents this 35-foot setback that the board has imposed. And so you can eyeball what the impact on the applicant's proposed site layout might be. And you can see that portions of units 19, 20, and 21 would be affected by imposition of this condition. We believe that imposition of the condition is supported by the neighborhood analysis, specifically the Ward Street neighborhood analysis that was prepared by the zoning office, submitted to the board on April 25th, and a revised version was provided at the last hearing on June 13th. It's consistent with unsubsidized projects. And we also feel that the local concern that the board's attempting to address through this condition is to make the project consistent with the surrounding streetscape, the zoning regulations, and protect neighboring properties.
So which of the units that you say are being affected?
19, 20, and 21. They're next to 90 Ward Street, the Jehovah's Witness property, along, and along Ward Street.
So that, you know, we're imposing that as the bylaw, 35-foot setback in this district. The house that they're tearing down to build a project is even further back than that. You have the analysis. If we gave them relief to the setback, I mean, even if you, if you gave them, you said, okay, you can go Residence District A, go 25 feet, it's, it's, these units are still way too close to Ward Street.
Yes, what they have proposed was 5.7 feet.
Right.
So Emily, just staying on this, are you saying that the only units affected are the ones you've just identified?
Correct.
Because when we look on the map, it looks as if there are others.
The only one by the front yard setback.
Only the front yard.
There are others that, that we will discuss.
Can I just ask?
Yeah.
The board next to the note, there was a note, just to be clear. This is a plan that was, the underlying plan was prepared by, and submitted by the applicant. The note, you'll see there's a box at the bottom.
Yep.
That box was added by Amory Engineers. There's a note that they were added by Amory Engineers. The only thing I would ask is that.
Could you read the note so we can?
Sure.
So the note says, one, red, blue, and green colored lines shown on this drawing represent dimensional setbacks imposed by the Hingham Zoning of a Board of Appeals' proposed conditions. Number two, the magenta lines are an estimated representation of 24-foot wide roadways. And three, all colored lines drawn by, sorry, Amory Engineers PC. I would note the only thing, just for the record, is that the date be added?
It is added to the digital version, yeah.
Okay.
It's not the printouts.
All right, great.
And then I'll just remind the board that the, what the neighborhood analysis showed for surrounding properties was the average of the Ward Street direct abutters are sighted 44 feet back from Ward Street. Average of all Ward Street abutters is 70 feet. And what the board's requiring is 35 feet.
Yep.
So the next item that we wanted to highlight is on page two. It's the applicant's response to the minimum side and rear yard setback, which the board imposed.
So that's C, C 1A 2?
Correct.
Okay.
In their response dated May 16th, the conditions on page four, but their response is at the top of page five. It reads very similarly to the response they have for the front yard setback.
Let's read it, so we.
Yep. It says that the applicant does not agree to the proposed condition and waiver denial because it would render the project uneconomic by significantly reducing the available units, and it is not justified by valid health, safety, environmental, design, open space, planning, or other local concern. So to understand what they might mean by significantly reducing the available units, if you refer to the plan that Amory prepared, and again, note the red line on all other property lines, so not from Ward Street, but all other properties. And we can see that a portion of unit 19, a portion of unit 18, are, those are affected. Then units one through nine on the northerly property line adjacent to 9 Autumn Circle, there is a, or excuse me, it's not even one through nine, it's a portion of unit two through nine is affected in the red. So it's the very far rear sliver. And then there is a small corner of unit 32 that would be impacted.
Do you want to get a distinction between the deck and the unit?
Yeah, I was going to ask you about that.
In connection with the applicant's waiver request from both rear, well, rear and side yard setbacks, the board had granted certain relief. They imposed the 20-foot setback for buildings. However, for pertinent accessory structures like decks, they allowed some relief so that the deck could extend up to 10 feet into the 20-foot setback, or to 10 feet from the property line. So Amory has depicted that partial waiver and condition in a dashed blue line. So again, units two through nine, you can see a very small portion of those decks would be affected. And that's it.
I would note that two appears to be very minimal.
Yes, maybe the stairs, and that's it.
So it's only the extent that the deck intrudes beyond, beyond 10 feet?
Correct.
So I guess I'd ask the applicant, with respect to those units, if the deck itself was pulled back to comply, would that render the project uneconomic?
Well, obviously, the first time I've seen this plan tonight, within a few minutes, but to the extent that I'm walking through with you at this point. No, I understand the question.
No, that's not, this is your plan.
No, I understand it is our plan. It is not our lines drawn on that.
So.
It is the engineers' lines on plan, not on ours.
No, I disagree with you. So this is your plan, and you've already represented that you have reviewed the setback lines, and that in your view, the imposition of those setbacks would render the project uneconomic.
Correct.
So that can't mean that this is the first time you're seeing it, because you've already represented that you've seen it, and you've made a determination that it's rendered uneconomic.
I will repeat, I have seen this plan just now. In our plan, for example, and I don't know that I don't see the adjustment, if you said that the, if we just pulled back the decks, for example, pull back in what way? Pull back closer to the building, or because the deck has to be a minimum size for usage, then we have to move the building?
I'm only talking about the deck, so I'll answer that question.
But you have to impact each one of the conditions and how one may impact on the other. For example, on the 20-foot wide roadway, although I see that he has a line for that, I haven't analyzed that.
I'm going to stop you, because I'm not talking about the roadway yet. I'm only talking about the deck. I'm only talking about the 20-foot and then the 10-foot. And what I specifically asked is whether or not pulling back the deck so it will become a smaller deck, whether that renders the project uneconomic.
It would render it economic if you make the smaller deck unusable, yes. It would affect the sale value of those properties and the marketability of them.
That's all I'm asking.
Okay. I would just note that patios, which provide a similar amenity, would not require any relief. And then also note that we again feel that the local concern addressed is consistency with the surrounding neighborhoods, zoning regulations for the protection of neighboring properties, specifically their privacy. And note that the board has been flexible and granted some relief. And the supporting documents are referenced. Again, the Ward Street, and in this case, the Autumn Circle zoning analysis, would demonstrate that no other properties in the neighborhood were sighted as close as the applicant chose to cite their improvements.
Are you aware of anything in the record that would demonstrate or support that a smaller deck, or turning a deck into patio, would mean that there's a lower sale price that would otherwise render the project uneconomic?
I'm not aware of anything. I don't believe any of the financial information that the applicant provided would lead the board to that conclusion.
Thank you.
I mean, the other option would be to make the building a little bit smaller, and then he'll say the same thing, well, a smaller square foot building is going to go for less money. But it also costs you less to build it, too. So I mean, these, you know, people with these figures and back and forth, it's, make them come out the way you want.
I'd like to also note one other provision of the regulations. I don't, does the board have the bylaw?
Regulations?
Yeah, we do.
Emily puts the definition of local concerns on the first page of this chart.
I'll read it. I'll just read it. Local concerns means the need to protect the health or safety of the occupants of a proposed project, or of the residents of the municipality, to protect the natural environment, to promote better site and building design in relation to the surroundings, and municipal and regional planning, or to preserve open space. That's the regulatory definition.
And then keep reading.
Says C 760 CMR 5607 C 3 through G.
Right. So that reference is in the definition.
Right.
When you go to that section of the regulations, that is evidence that is heard by the Housing Appeals Committee during, if there's an appeal. And in connection with evidence to be heard, this is a section, subsection C, 3C, evidence to be heard by the committee. And they give examples. So under E, site and building design, the committee may receive evidence of the following matters. And one of the matters that, and this is the reference in the definition of local concerns, is height, bulk, and placement of surrounding structures and improvements. So they look at both the height, bulk, and placement of the proposed project, which is the intensity of the project, and they look at height, bulk, and placement of the surrounding structures and improvements, which is the abutters. And that's the, you know, the density of the project. So all of this is consistent with how 40B projects are reviewed, both on the board level and at the Housing Appeals Committee level. And there's a number of Housing Appeals Committee decisions looking at this issue of setbacks and intensity and density and proximity to the neighbors. So the, you know, there's all the information on the record, that Emily has included in the chart, and then there's the regulations themselves that the Housing Appeals Committee reviews in considering, in considering the setback issue.
Yep. I'm sorry, Emily, I interrupted you from before. Did you have anything else on the?
I don't think so, no.
Okay.
So if we want to pop onto the next one, so condition C 1A little 3 relates to separation between buildings. And the board had imposed a 20-foot setback between buildings. The applicant provided their response on page five. They indicate that the applicant does not agree to the proposed condition because it would render the project uneconomic by significantly reducing the available units, and it is not justified by valid health, safety, environmental, design, open space, planning, or other local concern. So.
Because the project will comply with state standards?
No.
No.
We're on little, little 3 at the top of page five.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, got it.
On the Amory exhibit, he has called out the separation between buildings in red, so that the board could assess what the significance of this condition might be. And so you can see between units 31 and 27, they have 20 feet. Between units 30 and 28, they have 23 feet. Between units 14 and 13, were it not for a small projection on unit 13, it would comply at 20 feet. With the projection as designed by the applicant, they are just shy, probably about a foot and a half. Would you say that's fair, Pat? Two feet, a foot and a half for the?
It's two feet.
Two feet for the bay window projection.
And what is that projection?
So we believe it to be a bay window of some sort, but.
Is that between four and six?
It's between units 14 and 13. We see another between units 12 and 11. It seems to be in a lot of the units. It was.
Between four and six, it's, they're saying on their plan, 15 points.
That is inaccurate. So when you actually scale that out, it's approximately 20, 20 feet. Exactly. So they have the wrong label on the plan. When you scale it, it's 20 feet. If you measure between the buildings without those projections, it's actually 24 feet. If you measure between the buildings without those projections, it's actually 24 feet. So between units four and six, they comply. So we just wanted to highlight some inaccuracies and then note that it doesn't appear to us that imposition of this condition would significantly reduce the number of available units because they could very easily comply.
28 and 30, the deck, you wouldn't be able to have the deck.
Well, the condition reads buildings. So a deck is a structure.
Right.
But the condition doesn't relate to decks.
I don't understand what the projections are. That's the.
Chimneys.
Yeah, chimneys. Those are chimneys.
So under the bylaw, chimneys are allowed projections. I guess it would be at the board's discretion whether that's something that you feel would be allowable or not.
So if the chimneys were allowed, are any units affected?
It does not appear so. In other building footprints, there's like a box protrusion. Do you know what is in that?
Which specific one?
So let's look at unit 24. There's both a chimney protrusion and then right to the east of it, a box protrusion. What's the difference between those two? I mean, I'm led to believe both have foundations because they're represented on the building footprint, not like a bay window.
See, that looks more like a chimney and that looks like a bay window.
I would agree. Unit 30 also has both of them.
So I guess what we're, what we're seeing is that, looking at unit 24, it appears that one projection is a chimney and one, at least to us, appears to be a bay window. Do you see that on exit, on unit 24?
Also on unit 30.
I see the bump up, but I can't tell you what.
Okay. And that bump out looks very similar to the other, the not, what appears to be a non-chimney bump out looks substantially similar to what we're seeing in the other units, that you're now saying those are chimneys.
Yeah, some of the units don't show, don't look like there's a chimney bump out, but.
Now, if you look at unit 30, it has the same configuration of one next to another. And if you look at unit one, you find the same. So it appears to be a consistency, at least with regard to some, some in units. I can't, I can't tell you more than that.
I think probably fireplaces or something in those units.
So it looks like they got most of the 20-foot setbacks.
So with respect to the, just so we're clear, so between units 13 and 14, there is a bump out between those two. And are you saying that that is a chimney? You see what I'm looking at? Not?
Right there?
Yes.
The rectangular?
That one's angled on 13.
I would make that assumption, but not knowing more. I'm neither the architect nor the engineer. So we're asking engineering questions at first glance. So I can only tell you that the plans indicate that that bump is part of at least the foundation and therefore part of the building. Now, in a staff redesign of our project, whether or not we can remove that is a very different question than certainly what it is with our design and how we've submitted it and applied it.
So for example, if, when I looked at it, I.
Chimney foundation bump out?
I'm sorry?
A chimney foundation bump out, is that, is that measured to the setbacks?
It's part of the building, but it's at the board's discretion whether you want to allow that within the 20-foot separation or not.
All right, sorry. Go ahead, Joe.
No, because when I looked at it, I thought that that was something like a bay window and that there were other depictions of projections that looked like chimneys. And so if it was a bay window and that was the intrusion into the setback, I was going to ask, does the removal of the bay window render the project uneconomic, which is what is represented here? But if in fact it's not a bay window, it's something else, then that may result in a different answer.
Maybe this will help us too. I just went back to the original submission, scaled architectural drawings, which I assume haven't changed substantially.
They have not changed substantially.
And I'm looking at one of the side elevations for two- and three-bedroom quadruplex units, which I think are several of these. And that rectangular bump out appears to be some sort of an exterior doorway. It's like a little projection with a little shed roof.
You talking about like over here?
Well, I would think it would be, for example, this rectangular bump out. I would think this.
Right, but the other ones.
This section would be looking at this building this way.
So then what is this?
That looks like it's a two-story bay window.
Okay, so it appears, based on what we've seen, that these projections are bay windows.
And exterior doorways in some cases.
Well, all of these do not look like.
No, no, right. I'm talking about these rectangular ones.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm only talking about the ones.
Twenty feet, so I don't know what the problem is.
The angle ones that intrude into the setback.
That looks probably.
Every one I see is 20 feet between buildings, so I don't understand what we're looking at.
Well, because the.
Because it's only 18 feet if you measure to the bay window.
So if in fact that's a bay window, then that is the, that two feet is the difference between compliance or not. And I like to know if the applicant is saying that removal of the bay windows, which would be required to comply, renders the project uneconomic?
I, first of all, with regard to the characterization, what it is, I mean, one, it looks like a doorway. It could be the venting for the gas fireplace. And so therefore, a vent methodology that needs to be certainly there. But I think to the extent that we are now redesigning the units, their components, and their, the aspects of it, then changes in that would impact, as we do it over many or of these particular units, would in fact have the uneconomic impact, yes.
I don't believe that there's anything in the record that supports that conclusion. And we're not talking about many units. There are very few where this applies. And we are not attempting to redesign your project. We're simply saying, these are the conditions. And what we're hearing from you is that if you do the redesign and have a straight window instead of a bay window, that somehow renders the project uneconomic. And that is not a conclusion that this board is likely to accept. Emily, can you go on?
Sure. The next one also relates to building orientation or layout. It's condition C1A little 4. The applicant's response, I guess first, the condition simply states that buildings along Ward Street should be oriented to have a front facade facing Ward Street in order to maintain streetscape. The applicant responded that they don't agree with the proposed condition because it's cosmetic only and not justified by valid health, safety, environmental design, open space, planning, or other local concern.
What page are you reading from there?
This is page five of the applicant's May 16th response.
Oh, got it.
All right, go ahead.
So as Susan had read earlier, we feel that the imposition of this type of condition is supported by the regulations. It directly relates to building design and placement. It's not clear to us how reorienting the buildings alone would impact the economics of the project. And we feel that it would be much more consistent with the surrounding neighborhood if the front of a home faced Ward Street as opposed to the back and its private space. So the local concern we've identified is to promote better site and building design in relation to surroundings. We didn't, you know, we needed to go on.
Did you want us to look at the map or just proceed?
So there's not really much, there's no line depicted on the map for this or the plan, but you know, you can see that the, it would affect units 19 through 21 as well as 25 and, or excuse me, 23 and 22.
Let's do the environmental.
Okay.
We had actually not highlighted those ones yet, so we can toggle back to them if there's some that you'd like to discuss. The.
We're gonna stick with the plan for now. What's noted on the plan for now?
Yeah. Now, the next one, that is true. So, thank you, Mario. So the, there is a green line depicted on the plan, which is simply overlaid on the applicant's identified 100-foot buffer to the depression between wetland flag A1 through A11. That is the same line or setback that the board has imposed in condition C1B2, the vernal pool protection zone. So you can, you have a visual depiction of what that condition would do to the project. The applicant has indicated, I'll summarize, that it would render the project uneconomic. And you can see that whole or significant portions of units 10, 11, 12, 13, and then a smaller portion of 14 would be impacted.
In the roadway.
A small bit of the road. And then the next item is on page three of the staff notes. It's the second item there. The corresponding response is on page six of the applicant's May 16th response letter. It's condition C1C little i, and it relates to the roadway width. The board had imposed a condition that all internal roadway shall provide a traveled way of 24 feet in width. The applicant responded that they don't agree to the proposed condition because it would render the project uneconomic in the aggregate and is not justified by valid health, safety, environmental design, open space, planning, or other local concern because the project will comply with state standards. So Amory has shown, and I'll read it again, in magenta, the, an estimated representation of what a 24-foot wide roadway may look like, you know, over this proposed site layout. So you can see the most, you know, we'll first look at Road B. And to the extent that that could be widened toward the soil absorption system slash recreational open space area, it seems that it would not affect any units. Same goes for the remnants of Viking Lane. So that also appears to not affect any units. I would actually note that it doesn't appear that a wider roadway would directly affect any units. It would affect their driveway lengths. So on Road C, there's, you can see the most dramatic swing because the roadway was shifted over more in order to address the vernal pool setback and provide the 24-foot width. So it seems to affect units 29 and 28 most directly. Pat, would you say that's there?
Possibly.
And possibly unit 24. You know, it's, I don't know what flexibility they would have to reorient that quadruplex.
Okay.
The next condition, I think actually that's, that covers all the ones that relate to dimensional setbacks or any that we have a visual depiction of. There are.
Before you go on, just because, before we leave the plan, I was just, while Emily talked, taking my highlighter. And the number of units potentially impacted for elimination, particularly when you given, if some are eliminated, others could be slightly adjusted or moved, comes to no more than 10 units on the entire site by all of these dimensional, if every single dimensional requirement stayed and was altered kind of consistent with Pat's kind of conceptual lines.
Okay, agreed.
On page six of the staff notes, which corresponds, I apologize, we're gonna talk about condition D4, which the applicant's response is on page 21 of their May 16th submission.
That's D is in David 4?
D is in David 4. And then we'll circle back to the.
Do you not just want to go in order? Okay. No, this one I wanted to talk about.
If we're through with the plan.
Do you want to just go in order?
May I ask, if we're through with the plan, maybe we can put the lights back on?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
Good thought, Joe.
And then we're in a sidebar.
Okay, so you know how to work the lights?
I don't.
Oh, sure, 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 sure. Sure. Whatever, Emily, up to you. You, you're in charge.
Okay. So I'm gonna just highlight, I think, one other and then.
So are we doing D4 next?
Yeah, we're doing D4, page six.
What was the corresponding page for?
At page 21. So.
One second, let me just get to.
D4 allows the applicant to display one unlit temporary construction or marketing sign not exceeding 12 square feet at the project site entrance. And then provides some timeframe where, after which it would have to be removed. The applicant responded that they don't agree to the proposed condition because it would render the project uneconomic in the aggregate and is not justified by valid health, safety, environmental design, open space, planning, or other local concern. And they propose instead that they should be allowed to install two signs of 20 square feet each. And I guess it was unclear to us how installing more larger signs would make the project less.
Uneconomic.
Uneconomic, less uneconomic.
So I guess there's two questions. One is doing the one sign that's allowed. Altering that condition, is the applicant saying that that renders the project uneconomic? And then the second question is, if you then spend more money to create two signs, how does that render the project less uneconomic?
I may assume that's a question.
That is a question.
The, the section that we're talking about, I'm on page 22 of the draft conditions.
21.
It's actually 21.
Item four?
That's why I'm not finding it.
Up on the top third there, page 21.
Number four.
Number four, it reads the applicant may display one unlighted temporary construction or marketing sign?
Okay, yeah. The draft that I happen to have in my materials I brought tonight happens to be on a different page, that's why.
Sorry, we'll give you a minute if you wanted to.
Okay.
Okay.
I have it now, I just wanted to go back in it. I think the simplicity of it is restriction of marketing. In other words, what you're saying is, is that we're going to have this particular sign, which may be one area or the other area, the reason why we impact really on sort of two sections, is the fact that sensible marketing means that you've got to make sure you advertise your units and you have to go from that point. The fact that we are requesting two signs makes it more sense to allow economics. Does a sign cost more? Yes, it does. But the idea of marketing is, is that that marketing allows you to bring more of the sales, the timing, et cetera. That's why we deem it to be uneconomic, to restrict it to just one smaller sign.
So have you done some analysis or assessment that makes that determination justified?
The applicant has built many of these projects and is in the business of that. So the market.
If you build it, they will come. You let the realtors know they're available, and they will come. So, I'd save your money on the second sign.
And this is, this is the bylaw requirement that every housing project in Townham, and every project subsidized as well has complied with. Every single forty-b that's been approved in Townham has not been allowed to do more than one sign of this size and hasn't had any problems that we're aware of.
They've all gone belly up because they've only had.
One sign.
Well, that's what we're hearing from the applicant. What's your next one?
I, I'm sorry, I have gone all out of order. So, now we're gonna go backwards to page five. We're gonna start working our way back. So, condition C4, it's at the bottom of page five in the staff notes, it's on page nineteen of the applicant's, uh, yeah, the applicant's May sixteenth response. It's actually, they're opposing all the wastewater conditions imposed by the board, including a number of subsections, as uneconomic. I, we wanted to draw the board's attention to one in particular. It's subsection F on page twenty that reads that the, the system installed for the project shall be equipped with sensors and alarms to protect against high water due to failure of the pump, consistent with Title V. While the applicant's introduction to this section indicates that they, they are in part opposing the conditions as redundant with Title V, we wanted to draw the board's attention back to their responses to the waiver requests. In the excerpt that you received earlier tonight, the highlighted one, it's page fifteen of their May sixteenth response, they had requested a waiver from the Board of Health supplementary rules and regulations. The, the Board of Health has a requirement that units be located no more than two-hundred feet from, from the system that's supporting them, and you can see they've identified a number of units that would be greater than two-hundred feet. The discussion that the board had in May is that they would grant a partial waiver of that requirement, but only in connection with this condition, requiring sensors and alarms to put those units further than two-hundred feet on notice if there was a, a failure and issue in the system. So, here, they're saying that they disagree with the partial waiver as making the project uneconomic.
So, the, they are disagreeing with our requirement to put in sensors and alarms, which is already required by Title V, and have, they're disagreeing with us as making, enforcing that requirement as a condition for allowing a partial waiver on the two-hundred feet?
It appears so.
That does not make any sense. Can you, do you have, can you help us on that?
I, I think that the, we did say that we're gonna comply with Title V. So, to the extent that that condition is, as the system is finally designed, okay, imposes that condition, then we are obviously duty-bound to do it. But in, in looking at it at this point, the original point when the engineers looked at that, it appeared that it would, may adversely impact those, those other units. I think that the additional condition that you were imposing, or may impose, I should say, with regard to the fact that those sensors put in, that may likely stand. But I, you know, again.
So, are you in agreement that if, are you in agreement that it is appropriate for this board to condition any project, or your project, where the buildings would be closer than two-hundred feet? To, there'd be appropriate to have as a condition that you actually comply with the, with the sensors and the alarms?
I, I think it's totally appropriate for this board to condition it upon compliance with Title V. To the extent that you know that that condition is built in, then the answer to the question is you're covered, and as am I. I don't know whether or not the final design indicates that any units would be in within two-hundred feet. Our current design says it would be, yes. So, I'm not telling you and don't wanna comply with Title V, but I don't know about the two-hundred feet and the exact issues along the way. So, I think the, the issue is redundant, and as we indicated in our response, it's only duplicative of what Title V is imposing under your understanding of it. So, I, I think you're covered, and I'm not quite sure we need to double up.
Well, the only issue is not whether we're doubling up, is that your, what you've submitted to the board is saying that if we actually impose that requirement, it renders the project uneconomic.
Yep.
And it sounds like you're saying if we impose the Title V requirement of sensors and alarms, we've rendered the project uneconomic. You're not saying, oh, our condition is redundant. You've represented that it renders the project uneconomic.
Then I will amend that by saying that in to the extent that Title V does not require it, then your imposition of that requirement would render it uneconomic.
So, the imposition of a requirement for sensors and alarms, if the state requires it, it doesn't render the project uneconomic. If we require it without a state requirement, it does. It's the same sensors and alarms. Why does it have a different impact if the state requires it versus this board requiring it?
Because if the standard of the state says it's not required, and the town indicates that its special circumstance think that it is required, in the balancing test with regard to a forty-b, that may not reach the level of imposition. So, I'm not saying even though the cost would be the same, we have to comply with the law, and we are saying we'll comply with the state-imposed law, yes.
But if complying with the state-imposed law renders the project uneconomic, you don't have a project.
We have already assented to the fact that we are, we are proposing a thirty-two-unit development, which in fact does not include that, and therefore, to the extent that we are gonna comply, whatever that cost may be is the cost may be. But to impose an additional one that the state does not, that adds cost, reduces any possibility of a profit, and makes it uneconomic.
No, but in this case, we maintain that we are not adding a requirement that's in excess of Title V.
Then you're covered by saying comply with Title V.
But even if we're.
So, in other words, you're objecting to the duplicative nature of the condition.
One of the rejections was that, yes.
So, that is not an out, because if having these sensors is required by state law, and it makes the project uneconomic, you don't have a project.
If it's not required by state law, and we are requiring it independent of that, it's the same cost.
So, there is no difference in the impact on the project whether the state has required it or we have required it.
Well, I think there's a world of difference. And the world of difference is, we're at the HAC, and we're doing that balancing test. The fact that it is not required by state law, and we establish it's uneconomic, then you have a burden to establish that the fact that those warning things need to be in there either has design, makes it seriously deficient, not just consistent with your bylaws or rules, or what happens is, is that it imperils public safety, which is a very different standard. So, the answer to the question is the fact that it's gonna cost, we will comply with state law. But if there's an additional requirement that is not satisfy that test, there's a world of difference between those two things.
So, the difference you've identified is the burden we would have to overcome to require it. You've not identified anything that, that effect, that would say in one case it's economic, in one case it's non-economic. All you've talked about is the burden that has to be overcome to establish it.
We have designed the project, done the economics on that, without this there.
Without it there?
Yeah, without there.
And am I correct? So, I understand that you've designed the project without the sensors and alarms?
That's my understanding. I'm not the engineer.
I understand, so.
This was imposed upon us tonight, so I'm doing the best I can.
If, if we were to acquire it, and there's no state requirement, are you saying that that would, and we're not gonna give you that waiver, that would render the project uneconomic?
In the aggregate, absolutely.
Okay. And if the exact same requirement, we find out next month, is actually required by the state, you're saying it would not render the project uneconomic?
No. I'm saying it would still be the same cost, but we would then have the choice to build that, whether or not you consider it uneconomic or not, because we have to comply with those rules and regulations.
Agree, that you would have to do it, but.
The lines and senses aren't that much money. So, just saying it's not, it's gonna be uneconomic does mean.
Okay.
Would you like to, I mean, Pat might be able to take this out of the theoretical and actually indicate whether it is required under Title V or not?
Yeah, based, based on the design shown on the.
Before you proceed, we haven't really introduced you into the record.
Okay. Pat Brennan with Amory Engineers, the board's consultant civil engineer. Based on the grading utility plan, they showed three tanks adjacent to the soil absorption system. At least one of those tanks needs to be a pump chamber in order to get the sewage from the elevation it'll be at when it gets down there, up to the soil absorption system. Title V requires sensors and alarms for any pumped system. So, they're required regardless by Title V.
Thank you.
No matter how far the units served by the system are.
The unit served has nothing to do with it. The reason for the sensors and alarms is to alert you that there's a pump failure.
Right. Okay, okay. Emily, please.
So, I've actually covered the ones that I, I wanted to highlight for you. There's another series of conditions that relate more to similar issues like state code requirements, as well as post-permit reviews that Susan Murphy, Town Council, is better equipped to, to cover.
So, Emily, at the beginning, when she referenced the submission, there was a supplemental memo that Pat Brennan had submitted, and it was in response, it was in response to the applicant's response to the board's conditions. So, I, I think that if we went to those, those are related to stormwater, I believe, Pat, right? So, condition C1H, is that right?
Yep.
So, C1H, it's on page ten of the, the big document of conditions, the applicant's response to the conditions.
So, page ten.
Page ten. Before, so the applicant has a global response at the beginning of H, and then has some embedded responses to particular conditions of the board. I just, before we even get into it, the applicant's general response to H stormwater is that the applicant does not agree to the proposed condition, including subsections, Roman one through five below, to the extent that it impermissibly grants post-approval review authority to the board and its agents. I wanted to speak to that issue because it does not impermissibly grant post-approval review authority to the board. The board, and none of the conditions is anything ever coming back to the board. There's a number of conditions where it may be going to the zoning administrator, it may be the building commissioner's gonna be reviewing items, and there is specific housing appeals committee. Now, it's not, this is not addressed directly, and I will provide copies of these cases that I'm gonna speak to, to Emily for the record. So, in particular, Peppercorn Villagreality Trust versus Hopkinton Board of Appeals, Housing Appeals Committee.
Excuse me, someone's getting choked up. You okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
We can do you a Heimlich. They did that in the Senate dining room recently, somebody.
I'll cite two, two specific cases. Peppercorn Villagreality Trust versus Hopkinton. Zoning Board, some of the board's conditions, however, merely require submission and approval of additional plans concerning issues that were not addressed in the preliminary plans submitted with the comprehensive permit application. And then they give an example. And then they say, such requirements, so long as they do not require further hearing and approval by the board, but rather entail only approval by the town official who customarily reviews such plans, are appropriate. So, that's the Peppercorn case. In two thousand and seven, three years later, the Housing Appeals Committee in Paragon Residential versus Brookline ZBA states that, again, it, all that may be required is the inspection during and after construction by the appropriate town official, or if the board so desires, its consulting engineers. And it says, the board must comply with local requirements with regard to all details, not, and it's in italics in the decision, not included in the application. So, I would state that his objection is not supported by the Housing Appeals Committee.
Okay.
So, that's, I just wanted to respond to that, and now I'll turn it over to Pat, because the first one under H is little Roman I. And did you want, Pat has the memo, the board has the memo that Pat submitted today. So, this one, Emily, you want me to, I'll do it. Emily is taking notes. Little I had to do with test pit soil evaluation. And Pat, you wanna?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. And we've been asking for additional test pits.
You can speak up.
Yeah. We've been asking for additional test pit data at the subsurface infiltration systems for each of the roof systems in pretty much all of our letters. And in a February two, twenty eighteen response letter from McKenzie Engineering, they agreed to additional soil testing, and basically what it said was additional location-specific soil testing will be performed in conjunction with development of final construction plans. Yet they've said that they don't wanna, in, in their response, they said they don't wanna do that at this time. So, that's, that's that one.
The next one is under H, little Roman, right, that's three, the groundwater?
Correct.
Seasonal groundwater. So, this is on page eleven.
Yeah, so they, in that one.
So, that, that's the one that reads, if the seasonal high groundwater is found to be less than four feet from the bottom of any infiltration system, a mounding analysis shall be performed and results submitted to the zoning administrator for review.
That's correct, and that's a requirement of the stormwater standards, the DEP, Mass DEP stormwater standards.
So, the applicant's response there was, the applicant does not agree to the proposed condition, analysis is not required if no credit for infiltration is given for over ten-year storm event.
Right. Yet, in their stormwater report and their post-development analysis, they have used, they've taken credit for infiltration for the ten, twenty, well, all of the events that they modeled, which is the two, ten, twenty-five, and one-hundred, so they are taking credit for that. If they don't wanna take credit for it, they have to revise that model to not take, to not include infiltration. My guess would be that they would, at that point, show that they're increasing rate and volume of runoff in the post-development condition, thereby not complying with the stormwater standards.
With standard one.
Correct.
Right, right.
Okay, then the next one is on page twelve of the May sixteen responses. This is little Roman four, flared.
Flared end sections shall be reinforced concrete. Okay.
And the applicant has indicated that they don't agree because it would render the project uneconomic in the aggregate and is otherwise not justified, and Pat has some comments on that as well.
Right, so I reached out to Situate Companies and Cape Cod Wind Water today. Just to summarize, there's four flared end sections.
This is little Roman 4, flared sections.
Flared end sections shall be reinforced concrete. Okay?
And the applicant has indicated that they don't agree because it would render the project uneconomic in the aggregate and is otherwise not justified. And Pat has some comments on that as well.
Right. So I reached out to Cituware Companies and Cape Cod Wind Water today. Just to summarize, there's four flared end sections proposed on the project, three 12-inch and one 18-inch. The difference in cost for the total project to go from the plastic flared ends, the high-density polyethylene, to the reinforced concrete is $730.
$730?
On the total. The cost between, you know, the cost for purchasing those units. Yeah.
And this is the level that we're saying renders the project uneconomic?
I'm assuming that's a rhetorical question. I mean, what, what happens is the engineer had indicated that that is not necessary for that purpose. And yes, the addition of $1 for an unnecessary condition would render it uneconomic in the aggregate, absolutely.
Yeah, just to clarify, the, the reason why I always ask for reinforced concrete flared end sections on these projects, even when they're using the plastic pipe, is the plastic flared ends are flimsy. They, they distort very easily because you put rip-rep stoner on the, them, they distort very easily and the durability just isn't there. So the concrete flared ends hold up a lot, a lot longer, more durable, and they'll, they'll work for a much longer period of time, whereas the, you know, the flared end section is supposed to disperse the water over a flat area, almost like a weir, as it's discharged. You put those plastic ones in and they're so distorted that they don't do what they're supposed to do.
Your experience, Maria?
I think Emily recor...
They're light, so they're more apt to move. You know, through the years, kids get at them or whatever. It's not, it's not, it's not a lot of money.
Which one's next?
Just while we, while Pat's going through his memo, if we flip ahead to sec, to condition D 15, that's on page 23. This has to do with the installing fencing around the entire soil absorption system until the system is constructed.
Yep.
The, the reason why...
Well, just the, the board has claimed that this would render the project uneconomic. I'm sorry. The applicant has asserted that it would render the project uneconomic in the aggregate and that there's no valid health or safety or environmental reason why.
Yep.
Right. So the board of health had actually asked for this requirement. And the, the reason for it is so that construction equipment does not run over the area of the infiltration system and compact the underlying soils, thus decreasing the infiltration capacity of those soils, because the design is based on the infiltration rates. And it's actually in Title V, I attached an excerpt from Title V under 15 to 46, excavation and flagging of soil absorption system. Number one states, excavation for construction of a soil absorption system may be by mechanical means, provided care is taken to assure that the soil at the bottom of the excavation is not compacted or smeared. And it goes on to say a couple of other things. Then number two, prior to installation of the soil absorption system and until receipt of a certificate of compliance from the approving authority, blah, blah, the perimeter of the soil absorption system shall be staked and flagged to identify the location of the soil absorption system, prevent the use of such area for all activities which might damage the soil absorption system. So that's the reason for the fencing, to put the fencing around it.
Got it.
And that's Title V.
Okay. So then there's just a few more. Going back to page eight of the applicant's response document.
This is the May 16th.
Yes. So this is something that comes up in a couple of different places in the applicant's responses. So we're in little Roman 10, the fire department access has to comply with 527 CMR 1.0. The applicant says, you know, they're saying it's redundant. That in and of itself does not render the condition inappropriate under 40B. But what I'd like to say is they're saying that, you know, it's redundant where the applicant's bound to comply. But I'll note that in the 40B regulations themselves, 56.058C3, under conditions, that it says, the board in its decision may make a comprehensive subject to any of the following conditions. Number three, the securing of the approval of any state or federal agency with respect to the project. And so therefore, it is not only not inappropriate, but it is in fact consistent with the conditions for the board to require compliance with specific state regulations.
Yep.
So that's just a generic comment that comes up a few different places. Let's see, these are ones Pat covered already. I think there might have been a few other, Emily, near the end, that he flagged. That's the Title V. Talk about those.
Post-action.
Yeah, okay. So now we're on page 25, and I think there's just two more. So F, so on page 25, F 1B, this is post-construction. The applicant has constructed the project, sold them, and is long on. F 1B, promptly remove snow windows in the site triangles. And then number four, removing snow from the site as soon as practicable after large snow events. The applicant's response to both of those is, requiring the owners of the project, after the applicant's long gone, to remove snow makes his project uneconomic for him. And Emily and I just couldn't, didn't understand that. And we thought, wondering if the board understood that.
Are you saying that, that would render the project uneconomic?
Yes, that's what's our response. By the way, we're not long gone. The answer is, is that when you build a project, you are there dealing with it. It's a, it's a condominium project. The traditional aspect takes years to do this. So the additional cost of doing something that is not otherwise regulated, for whatever reason, adds to the cost and adds to the uneconomic basis for it. Okay? Someone may say this, I mean, again, I understand their redesign and I understand their attack tonight. But the, the, the answer to the question is, yes, it would by imposing a condition that is not otherwise related to valid health and safety concerns.
So you don't think removal of the snow windows addresses a valid safety concern?
It, it, it may be in one, but not the safety concerned within the context of a 40B.
So the people who, I guess what, if I'm hearing him correctly, the safety of the 40B occupants is not as important as the safety in an unsubsidized project? Because it would be appropriate for safety for another project, but it's not appropriate for safety for a 40B project. That's what I just heard him say.
No, I said it was your concern for safety as opposed to a, a required concern for safety. I think, you're saying, I think it should be removed, I think it's better for them, you've made that determination. That's not when the determination is made.
I would say that these conditions have been imposed on both subsidized and unsubsidized projects consistently. And hang on.
Yes, I'm, I'm familiar with that. And I'm just amazed that we would get a response in terms of this sort of safety issues, saying, from the applicant, saying that it renders the project uneconomic. What else do you have?
I think that's all we had.
I really appreciate the time and effort that you and Emily have, have really put in and sharing the document, not just with us, but also with the applicants, so you can see this sort of analysis that we've been, that we've gone through and that we have asked our staff to go through to make sure that as we impose conditions, we look at the specific concerns that we're tasked at addressing and also seeing whether or not there's a response that we've received from you that answers our concerns. And so again, I really appreciate the work you've done. It's not easy and sometimes it's not appreciated, but I can tell you, not only this board, but I'm sure the folks out there appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you.[1174.23][1174.23](applause)
Emily, is there anything else that you wanted to have submitted for the record at this point?
I don't believe so. We've, we've read everything into the record.
Okay. This is going to be the last time I'm going to ask if there's anyone who is here who would like to make a statement concerning this project. Please come up to the mic and, yes, yep, you're, you're number one, and give us your name and address.
Hi, I'm Joyce, I'm Joyce Bethany, 23, Autumn Circle. I just need a point of clarification as far as the fencing around the entire project. Is there going to be one?
What are you talking about?
Between, because I'm in a butter to the land, to the...
Are you talking about pre-construction, construction, post-construction?
Post-construction.
The applicant has proposed a fence around the perimeter of, around, behind all the houses and extending to the front yard.
Okay.
So I don't believe it extends past the wetland system, but otherwise does cover the whole project.
That's my reading. Are you, do you agree or is there some?
We have proposed some fencing and...
That's my understanding.
Some fence, but is, but is the entire project going to be encircled with a fence?
I do not believe that the entire project, every inch, has a fence along every section.
Okay.
As Emily had indicated, when we're abutting other properties, there will in fact be a fence. So if you're in a butter directly to that...
Yes.
Then it, the plan would indicate it. So the answer's in the plan.
Okay, so...
It's shown in the plan.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just briefly, Jeff DeLeese, I represent a group of abutters here tonight. Ms. Bethany is also one of them. She's on the corner of, she's at the end of Autumn Circle there, right to the right as you enter the project. And I think that what she was really asking is, will there be a fence along the length of this access road, which is located off-site, but right along the sideline of her property? I'm just wondering if the applicant knows that.
I can answer that. No, the fence, the fence near, in the vicinity of her property starts perpendicular to the road, runs along her property line that she shares with...
The rear line.
Correct. Not, not the line projecting out to Autumn Circle.
Her westerly property line. Okay. And secondly, I just wanted to make a general observation to the board, and I think it's kind of pointing out the obvious, but one of the things that is kind of noteworthy in the last hour and a half of discussion that I've observed is that there is no data that I've seen at all submitted to this board, such as appraisals and market analysis, data of that nature, which is something that's contemplated in your regulations for comprehensive permits, that would justify the basically stock response that we've seen over and over and over again of, in the aggregate, it's rendered to be uneconomical. And I think that it's important for the board to recognize that in the absence of that type of data, what we're dealing with is a statement that is a very much conclusory statement based only on speculation. I think that's something that the board should keep in mind as it goes through its deliberation. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name's Arthur Casey. I live at 17 Autumn Circle. What is the profit margin for this project? If everything makes it unaffordable, what is their profit margin? Have they submitted any numbers to show what their profitability is on the project so that someone can look at it and make an actual financial analysis? That it's unprofitable, because every answer he's given is, it's unprofitable. But what is his profit margin? And that's my question, because I don't understand what the numbers are, because I haven't seen any submitted unless I'm, if you've got them, I'd like to know.
Yeah, so they have submitted a pro forma budget that does give their projected profit margin. So they, they have done that. Do you want to...
I, I...
Let me ask Susan.
Well, I, I think what's interesting, the most interesting fact of all the numbers, is that they've acknowledged that even if the board did not impose one condition on this project, and they built it exactly the way it's on the plan, that it's uneconomic. So that's what they've said. They've said, even if they build this project exactly the way they proposed it, they're claiming they're not going to make any money.
I'd like to say something.
I'm not sure they're saying...
You know what? I don't know who you are.
Oh, excuse me.
Wait, wait a second. Why, why he doesn't stand up and give us some information?
So please address your comments.
I'm sorry. I'm Regina Casey. I live at 17 Autumn Circle and I'm, I'm very tired. This, this is uneconomic for me to be here. And I have probably a lot less, I, I don't have very deep pockets. So I don't understand why we have to hire attorneys. Does anybody concerned about what's uneconomic for us? That's all. And what else we have to go through? I'm just building addition on my house. I had to jump through hoops with the guys down, down the hall there, and we've done everything in compliance. It's taken months, and it's very time-consuming and expensive to ask for all these permits. I'm not complaining to anybody. It was my idea to do it. So if I had an idea to go and make some money and build condos that nobody wants in their neighborhood, I would, I'd take the burden of their loss. That's all.
So just, just so you understand the context, the, the state has Chapter 40B, which is intended to promote certain projects, and the concept of uneconomic is ingrained in the statute. And the applicant has filed under, under 40B and entitles them to certain presumptions, and they are proceeding as they see fit under 40B. We don't agree with how they're proceeding, but there is actually a statutory basis that they've been following.
So this is providing a public service?
Well, so the, the state legislature has in fact determined that providing affordable housing is a public service. So there are things that go along with it, there are appropriate regulations, and there are appropriate restrictions that this board intends to impose. But yes, creating affordable housing is providing a public benefit.
Well, I want to thank people who provide the public service. All are people. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Steve Hurley, 49 Ward Street. I just have a question. There was some discussion of signs earlier, and I think the applicant wanted two signs. What are, what are these signs and where are they going to be located?
So the signage were during the construction phase, they're, I think, general marketing signs, and there's issues about the size and location. Do we have them designated on the plan? So I don't know if you have, have you designated the, the locations on the, on the plans?
No.
So they are at a location yet to be determined, although there is the assertion by the applicant that they will be at such locations as yet undetermined that unless there's two, it'll render the project uneconomic.
Okay. Are these temporary signs?
Yes, only during construction.
Are there going to be any permanent signs that I see in some of these projects around time?
What is, do we have proposals?
There are none proposed. I mean, the bylaw would potentially allow...
So to the extent that the Hingham zoning bylaw would otherwise allow, but that they have not proposed to us any post-construction signage, I believe, am I correct on that?
I'm unaware that the post-construction, if you and I were guessing, I would assume that there would be an identification sign at the entrance, but that would comply with as of right.
Right. So there's nothing special that has been proposed in what, what you've submitted?
No.
So the post-construction sign, where would that be?
That would be whatever location that, typically, it would be at the entrance, and there are appropriate restrictions in, in our zoning bylaw as to size, dimensions, lighting, all, all of that.
So therefore, it would be on Ward Street?
That is what is being presumed, although the applicant has not committed, because they haven't filed anything about where it, the sign would be.
Okay, thank you.
You are anxious to come up. It's got...
Yes, God, I can come all over the back. Sorry. Graham Madison, 12 Autumn Circle. Just a question or clarification. I know this is the last hearing for public submission. The applicant mentioned that, you know, when the plans are revised and as the plans are revised, could you just explain the process of how that goes? I mean, if the plans are completely changed, do you have to reopen it and go back to a situation where things would be peer reviewed? How much is the definition of a change? And how is that process? And would there be, would there be an opportunity for the public to ask questions? Yeah. Thank you.
That's a great question. And so I'm going to begin, and then Susan, you can either correct me or continue from where I stop. So this is intended to be the last hearing. After, after we're finished, we will close, and that will be the end of public input. Then the board will have a period of time... I'm sorry?
Any input. The record is closed.
The record will be closed. Then there will be a period of time, but we're going to review the record, and then we will have another public hearing where people who are not on the board, so the applicant and the public would not be able to voice opinions, but we would then have a public deliberation and ultimately render a decision about this project. You asked specifically about the plans. The plans, the applicant has repeatedly stated, are not complete. They're conceptual in many cases. We have imposed requirements that we want to make sure that the plans are fully flushed out. They will be reviewed in full by the building department. And to the extent that the applicant winds up submitting or requesting something that is substantially inconsistent with the conceptual plans that have been submitted, they will need to request a change that would in fact be reviewed by this board.
And so I'll just make one minor tweak to what you said, which is if they make any changes, even minor, they have to submit a notice to the board, and the board gets to decide whether it's substantial or insubstantial. And if the board deems it substantial, then the board would hold a public hearing at that point.
Right. So the public hearing, the opportunity for the public to get involved again would be if there are substantial changes.
Right. But they would have to come to the board with any changes, and that would be done at a public meeting in public of the board to determine if those changes are substantial or not.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Jean Silverio, 6 Autumn Circle. Does this mean that if they take Autumn Circle off the board on the designs, is that a major change? Or, you know, the sidewalks? And I haven't heard anything about how that's going to go.
So what, the two that you just mentioned, depending upon what they do, the overwhelming probability is that would be considered a substantial change.
Thank you.
There was someone, yes, yes, ma'am.
June Freedman, 13 Autumn Circle. I haven't been able to attend the last few meetings. I don't understand this uneconomic business. Is that an advantage to the developer? If something is considered uneconomic, it can be bypassed?
So that's a great question. Under the Chapter 40B statute and regulations, if the board, this board imposes conditions that render the project uneconomic, then, then the applicant is going to be able to push back on us, and we really have to justify that those conditions are required by health, safety, site concern, things like that. If we are unable to make that justification, we will not be able to continue with those conditions. If we are able to, then we would be able to continue. Is that fairly accurate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
We see somebody else?
Yeah.
Good evening. Brad Taylor, 16 Autumn Circle. I'd just like to hit a couple of things that we've talked about since January, and you mentioned a couple of things right there, safety since January. So that's five, six months.
I think you and I both had a full head of hair when this began. Enough with the hair jokes.
So we, we have consistently talked about road widths, sidewalks, there were lights, fire hydrants, building separation. I think at one point even the building separation was so that a ladder could be put up if needed to be. Fencing, the roundabout on Autumn Circle, we really haven't discussed that much, and that directly impacts me, because I'm on that roundabout. What has gone on with that? And I'll get back to that question, because I still have a couple other things. Snow removal, that was a new one today. Environmental, we have consistently talked about wetlands, avernal pool, septic, though on the wetlands, what's interesting is we haven't talked about the entrance, because across the street from the entrance is wetlands as well. So we really haven't talked much about that either. And then finally, health. Well, obviously, the septic alarms we talked about today. The nitrogen loading came up in April, and then I believe the recreational space is on top of the septic. So, you know, that's just a recap of everything, but I would like a little more information on that roundabout on Autumn Circle. I haven't seen anybody, and we're all here, has anybody come out and actually looked at that and measured it out and done any work on that? Thank you.
So going to the roundabout, we've had engineers look at that. Susan or Emily, do you want to comment specifically on that?
Right. Well, just generally, what's been available to the applicant and the public and was discussed in detail with the board was all of the conditions. So some items were touched upon tonight because there are items that Emily and I felt needed maybe some more clarification or review. But as we noted, there's over 20 pages of conditions, and they touch on all those different aspects that Mr. Taylor raised. On the roundabout that was reviewed by Jeff Dirk, and so there are, there is a number of conditions related to the design for the safety of the roundabout. I believe there were even conditions when the board was reviewing the draft conditions that Attorney DeLeese recommended a couple of conditions. So that's, that's where it stands. The peer reviewer did his review of the proposed plans, there's a number of conditions, and the, and the draft conditions incorporate all of those items to try to, if it's going to be built, have it be done in the safest way possible.
Right. So the fact that we didn't discuss it this evening is not meant to suggest that the issue is unimportant, but we, we wanted to make sure that we covered some of the issues that may not have been adequately or fully covered previously. But you correctly point out that there are lots of issues in this project, and we have covered them over the course of many months, and the board will do its best to make sure that the ultimate conditions that we, that we do impose address all those concerns. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Someone else? Yeah.
Lisa Taylor, 16 Autumn Circle. I married the bald guy. I just, I've been to a number of meet, 40B meetings, yeah. 40B meetings since the start of this, and on all of them except this one, I've seen renderings. Just so like people can understand, because 40B is in theory supposed to fit into the look and the feel of the surroundings, and today, I just want to stay to the record, and I can't visualize it very well, unlike a lot of the other projects I've seen, so just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. Yes.
Yvette Yusaf, 48 Ward Street. I wanted to just go back to one of the things that you guys mentioned before. So if the applicant submitted a change that you deemed it to be significant by the board...
Yes.
Then a new hearing would occur...
Yes.
...in which the public would make, be able to make comments again?
Correct.
And would that restart this entire process all over again?
No.
And to what degree would that process continue?
Well, we would have to make a determination if it was a substantial change or not, and if we did, then the applicant would have to demonstrate that it was consistent with local needs and that it was necessary for the project. Are there criteria that they specifically have to, to meet under the regulations, Susan?
The, the regulations give examples which are not binding as to what may be considered substantial or insubstantial. So they give examples. These are generally considered substantial, these are generally considered insubstantial. They're not binding...
Like adding 12 more units would be substantial.
Right. Or, you know, but if you were decreasing the number, it wouldn't. But change, that would be a determination for the board, and with the, with respect to what the board would review, if the board said, we need to have a public hearing, the regulations say only the changes in the project or the aspects of the project affected thereby shall be at issue in such hearing. So for example, one of the speakers asked about, well, if Autumn Circle goes away, the board has a proposed condition that there has to be a second means of access. That was an emergency, you know, public safety issue, then, you know, that would be the only discussion. If Autumn Circle goes away, what's the secondary means of access, emergency access going to be? So it would be limited in that way. Unless, right, unless in eliminating that, they moved other things around. So it all depends on what they propose.
Okay. So, but if new waivers had to be requested for that modification, then the same, that piece of the process would continue?
Right. But so first, for example, if the question was, there are only going to be 18 feet instead of 20 feet, because we're putting in a chimney, the board would make a determination, is that substantial or not substantial? The board could. I'm not going to speak for the board. They might say, well, that's not very substantial, we're not going to have a whole hearing about it, we'll just decide whether or not chimneys are, make a difference or not. So those, you know, I mean, it can be very tiny, it can be very big.
Right. But hopefully, one of the points is clear that, for example, if the roadway design changes, we would not necessarily then open up the hearing and say, let's look at vernal pools again. But if in fact the road was going through a possible vernal pool, maybe the two issues would, would coincide. But, but having one issue come up when, doesn't open up everything.
Depends on how much of a ripple effect it has.
Right, yes.
All right, thank you.
Does, I just counsel, did you, are you comfortable with the explanation? Did you want to add anything to that, or you...
No, I, I think from point of view of a general approach to it, that's exactly the procedures.
Okay, thank you.
The answer's yeah.
Let me just bring something up. You brought up vernal pool, so I wanted to talk about that. We got two letters, we basically have the applicant and our consultant don't agree.
Yes.
The applicant sent his letter to the Massachusetts Natural Heritage Endangered Species Program to this Brad Holmes, and, and our consultant has a different view, and he reached out to a few other people that also have a different view. So my, my question is, is do we send South Rivers? Is that our business to send this, to, to the Massachusetts Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program? Or...
I don't think it's ours. I don't think it's our responsibility. I mean, if...
Well, I mean, it's, it's an issue whether the thing gets certified or if it doesn't get certified. So I, personally, I'm just going to go with, I know John Zimmer, so I'm going to go with what John Zimmer says.
Right.
So I'm going to say it's a vernal pool, but I, I'm just wondering why this was sent to Natural Heritage? Does that mean someone tried to get it certified, or, or what? So I don't know. I just wanted to bring that up.
It is Natural Heritage that ultimately would make the decision as to whether or not it was certified.
Right. So I'm, I'm just banking on Brad Holmes is probably, to me, will agree with South River and not ECR. But anyway.
Nothing's been submitted to the board. We've heard through the grapevine that a submission was made to Natural Heritage to get the vernal pool certified. So our belief is that the applicant's scientist sent that to Natural Heritage and copied the board, but in response to the fact that Natural Heritage had received an application. The board was copied with it. Because the board received it, Emily sent it to John Zimmer, who's the board's review engineer. We received, because we only got that one yesterday...
Yes.
...from the applicant. John Zimmer's response came today, but John Zimmer was able to speak to email with, so those email responses attached to that letter were actually with officials at Natural Heritage and are their responses.
With Mr. David Paulson.
With, right, with David Paulson regarding John Zimmer's understanding, what John Zimmer submitted.
Right.
So, you know, John, John's letter, which you have, kind of, you know, kind of states his understanding after reviewing the applicant's submission and his correspondence with the state.
It comes down to whether or not the physical and biological characteristics that are required to certify the vernal pool have been met. Our consultant says they have, their consultant says they haven't. So it's up to Natural Heritage to make the decision.
Right. Okay. Anything new?
Yeah, we missed that. Yes, all right.
Farouk Yusaf, 48 Ward Street. I'm trying always to be the last one to speak, maybe. First of all, I'd, I'd really appreciate the due diligence of you guys doing, spending the time. It's very impressive, and thank you so much. Really impressive. Anyway, for the last two years, I've been hearing all the discussions about this project, and it really doesn't take a brain scientist or whatever, rocket scientist, to figure out that we, this project is really, we're using the wrong project in the wrong location. The applicant completely ignored all the 40B regulations, which require submit this, submit that, submit this. He is ignoring all of that. He's also ignoring all the board requirements which affect the public and safety and health. What else are we going to be basing on? He's not following any of the rules. Doesn't he even think that he's using the wrong project in the wrong location? It's very clear that's, that's the case. You know, I don't know what else to say. Come to the estimate and the budget. I never seen in my life, as been in engineering business over 50 years, that you submit a proposal without any drawing. How can you make a calculation, look in a crystal ball to say, yeah, it's going to be that much? Also, I hear the comments about the setbacks and everything else. Yes, the unit would be limited. I did not hear anything also limitation of the septic systems that are going to affect the size of the property. If I can use the saying that we, apparently that project is putting a square pig in a round hole, I believe that's the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You got a woman back?
Yes, ma'am.
And then we'll come back.
Gabriela Macedo, 48 Ward Street. So I was just wondering, how does like the recent court ruling regarding the Autumn Circle easement play a role in appealing the project?
So the applicant has made its submission using Autumn Circle, and ultimately, they may wind up having to defend that, and we will make sure that there are appropriate conditions in whatever we do that take into consideration that litigation. So the litigation is clearly going to be part of our consideration and will also be a factor when we prepare our conditions. Thank you. Yes.
Graham Madison, 12 Autumn Circle. Quick question. The new entrance on Ward Street, did we ever get traffic speed data there? I know at one point there was some discussion about getting speed data there. That's my question.
From the police department, I assume you're asking? So the police department had done a, conducted a speed study at the prior site. They attempted to do a study at this site, and there was a malfunction in the equipment. So we did not receive more recent information than what the applicant had provided in their 2016 traffic impact assessment.
Could you repeat that again, here?
We, we did not. The short answer is that the, the police department attempted to collect more recent speed data for that particular segment of Ward Street, but there was an equipment malfunction, and, and they weren't able to provide any newer information.
The answer is no. Yes.
Joan Santa Cruz, 290 High Street. Will the police be doing that study again so that the board will have that information when they consider and make their decisions? Seems to me that would be very important information for them to have.
We will not have that information...
We will not have that information before the close of the public hearing, so the board will, can consider whether or not to impose a condition related to additional data during its deliberations.
What would prevent you from getting it before the close?
Well, we're going to close it tonight.
Oh, tonight?
So, I don't think we can get it done.
And did you say 2016 was when the?
That's correct.
Did we miss something?
Well, we.
Were you asleep?
No, that was when the applicant prepared their initial traffic report, because that's when this application was submitted. The police department did collect more recent data this year for a segment of Ward Street just immediately north of the site, so I think we have pretty accurate information on the record. It's just not 600 feet south of the original project. It's not the new driveway location.
And I would just like to add my own personal traffic observations. I'm right on the corner of High and Ward Street. I can't cross the street anymore, and there have to be no cars coming in either direction for a good long space of time, because when they do come, they're flying. They're flying by. Thank you.
I'd just like to note that the applicant's study did not contemplate this entrance either.
Right, right, correct.
So, all of the numbers are for a different entrance. I mean, but it's all within 600 feet of the same area. So, I don't, if the applicant's numbers from 2016 are from that area, the original proposal, and so are the police department's, then the board is relying on.
The board will make a determination as to what data and the sufficiency of the data that's been presented.
I'd like to say it's the same information from both sources, from the same location, none of which is from the new location.
I believe we have something on the record from Jeff Dirk as well.
Yeah, we have information, but 600 feet further from the intersection, so I'd say they're going faster.
Well, if you have any doubt, come by any time.
I don't doubt, I don't doubt that people drive fast.
Come by any time. Be careful. Thank you.
It's been an interesting intersection for a long time. Okay, we need to talk about a date for our next hearing, which would be to have a vote. What are we proposing?
We discussed potentially the week of July 22nd, 23rd, and the following. Next month, the board has a regularly scheduled meeting already on the 24th. On the 24th, do we? Yeah, we do, on the 24th, right. It, since that's your regular July meeting, I think the agenda is likely to be relatively full, and you wouldn't want to deliberate that evening. So some other evening that week could work.
So we're talking the week of July 23rd?
Yep.
Susan, what's your?
It works for me. I mean, Emily is away the 16th through the 20th, so I don't know if it would make.
I'm sorry?
Emily is away.
Yep, 16th through the week prior.
The week prior. I'm away the week prior to that, so.
So either later in the week on the 20, of the 23rd or the following?
Yeah, or the beginning of the following week. Technically, the deadline is the 5th, which is a Sunday, so it's the 6th. So, I, you know, the 30th, the 31st might be better, just so Emily has a full week back in the office.
I'm good, other than the end of August, the 21st.
So. We have to be done by then anyway, so. I think if you're both away, we should give ourselves more time. I'm looking at the week of August 30.
July 30?
I'm sorry, July, July 30.
I would just say earlier in the week because Emily will present you with a draft.
Right.
Emily and myself will be draft findings and conditions for your consideration, and then whatever changes the board makes need to be incorporated, so.
Want to say the 31st, which is that Tuesday?
Yep.
Counsel, even though you don't get to actively participate, how's that work for your schedule?
I will not be around that date. I don't know whether or not, and our, anybody from our office may or may not be there.
I mean, again, as you know, we can't.
No, it's, it's not, it is open to the public, I understand.
Right. Okay, so, I think the 31st of July at 7:00 PM? Okay, at 7:00 PM? Next week at 7:00.
Again, timeline, schedule, if we close this evening, we have 40 days to issue the decision.
So this is within that timeframe.
So within that timeframe.
So, I would accept a motion which is in two parts. The first part is that the public hearing is closed as of this evening, and second, that the board resume its, or not, the board schedule its next meeting for the 31st of July at 7:00 PM to deliberate on this project. Anything else, Susan, that you think we need to add? So I would accept such a motion?
I will second those, that two-part motion.
So you would make the motion?
I would make the motion. Sorry, make the motion. I'd second it too if you want me to do that.
That would be at the 30, on the 31st at 7:00 PM.
I'm just getting anxious.
I'll second.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
The hearing is now closed for the public.
Thanks.
Next?
Yeah, we have one additional item that's going to be continued.
Okay.
So you had on your, your agenda, request for adjournment from Avalon, and we'd like you to.
Didn't we continue?
You need to, well.
No, it's not a hearing, it doesn't need to be continued.
Okay, so are you available July 10th, and we'll just put it on the next agenda?
By, oh.
We're not going to take it up.
How do we, who do we need for that?
You two and Robin.
I'm available on, so I can.
7:00 PM, okay.
Thanks, Pat.
Thanks, Pat, have a good night.
Thank you.
I don't, as a member of the board, you don't. Okay, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
It's a move.
For a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.